Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting tonight. If you'd all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erin, can I take your role, please?
Councilmember Detroit?
Here.
Councilmember Pointer?
Here.
Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
All right, everybody's here. There are no changes to the agenda tonight. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve of the agenda as it stands.
I'll set it up. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have our public input period. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments, and we will please ask you to stand up for it, too, so we can see you. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take nor- no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. It's five oh one. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
I do. Hello. My name is Jim Fisher. I live in two hundred Sealy. My wife, she and I have lived in town for thirty years. And I've also been on the Manchester Airport Committee for a number of years. And speaking on behalf of myself and another member who could not be here, we noticed that as of last Friday, there was an item added to the agenda talking about the capital improvement projects at the airport. And I would just like to say I'm here to answer any questions if you should have any. And more importantly, I would like to respectfully suggest that the city council would meet with the airport committee just to make sure that you've got all the information. That way, you're doing what's in the best interest of the city and the people that you represent.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public input period. And before us, we have the consent agenda. Item three point one is approval of minutes of the January eighth regular city council meeting and also our January fifteenth city council work session. I need a motion to approve Resolution eleven approving the bills. Next item, I need a motion to acknowledge and receive of the following city reports and minutes. That's of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three library board meeting. Next item, I need a motion to approve the following renewal application of off-premise class E retail alcohol license in reference to vacuum vape at three sixteen East Main Street. And a new application for five-day special class C retail account license for Lucky Wife Wine Slushies for an event at the gathering place on April thirteenth. Next, I need a motion to approve the Snow Pioneer Snowmobile Club. They submitted an Iowa DOT application to use the state right-of-way for signage and grooming snowmobile trails along some routes. Next, I need a motion to approve the fire department's new elected officers for the twenty twenty-four season. Do I need to read everybody who was elected? Okay. Next day, a motion to approve payment to program. They submitted planes for the upcoming twenty twenty-four street improvement project, utility coordination for eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents, and the street improvement project easements for seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And with that, that is all of our consent agenda. I'll take a motion first, and then a second, and then we can have discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second. I'll set it up. It's open for any kind of questions you would have.
Um, I don't, I'm sorry. I did go back to last year's look, but I'm assuming that the snowmobile club, the it's exactly the same slash, okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to check. Thank you.
As far as three point six, I had a question about that entire night, I guess, or procedure for that with the council not being invited to go to such an event kind of offended me. We make a lot of decisions for the fire department as far as funding and them kind of things, and to not be able to see something that might be life-changing to some of these guys, if it's, I mean, I don't know.
I think it's open to the public. Anybody could have come. Yeah, you could have come.
We never even knew what was going on as the problem.
I found out a couple days before, just because I had to come swear in, so.
Well, again, I promised the fire chief about next time.
Yep.
When you do your election, all services.
Yeah.
Make sure we invite the council.
Yeah, we can do that. Absolutely. Anything else? Okay. Uh, see, motion, Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Next.
And congrats to all the officers, obviously.
Yes. Next, we, it's five oh six, and we're gonna have a public hearing of proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimates of cost for the twenty twenty-four East Main Street Improvement Project. It's a public hearing, and it is now open. Do we want to talk about what we've seen so far? We have the
Sure, we did. Project plans were put together per council directive for work from Bailey Drive east towards the last phase of the East Main Project near Stiles Street. Proposed project is includes new water sewer veins. Replacement all the paving with eight-inch PCC concrete. Turn lanes will stay pretty much in the existing configuration at Bailey Drive and with east of Anderson Street, the width will be narrowed down to thirty-four foot to man foots further east out there. And the north side will have an eight-foot wide pedestrian path slash trail. And the south side will have a five-foot wide sidewalk. So it was prepared over about the last year, year and a half, and went, was submitted to the DOT for bids back on January, submitted in October, bids were in January seventeenth, so they received seven bids, I believe it was. Our estimate was based on the last two years of pricing we've seen is one point five seven five million dollars. So we did get a very good bid on that. I think bids are noticeably lower right now than they had been over the last year, year and a half. So that's a good sign for people doing work on that end. So if there's any questions, you have to address those.
Because you had an estimate of one point nine, correct?
Total project.
Total project with everything.
Restrictions were one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Right. Oh, I see it there. Yep. So any comment from the public regarding the project? Hearing none, it's five oh eight, and I'm going to close the hearing. And before us, we have Resolution twelve. I need a motion to approve the confirming plan specifications, form of contract, and estimates of cost for the twenty twenty-four East Main Street Improvement Project.
We approve Resolution twelve?
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I thought it was great to see as many low bids as we did. That's good to see. It's not expected yet.
Okay, with that, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
This is approving.
The specifications.
Plans, specifications, form of contract. There's not approving or awarding the bid at this time?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Brian?
I sustain.
Okay. Next, we have consideration of the bids for the twenty twenty-four East Main Street Improvement. So do you want to talk about the bids, who they all came from, Ryan?
Should probably buy those.
Did you have some bidders?
Yeah.
Upgrade X, we have partway, I was a little bitter. They were one million three hundred thirty, or three hundred forty thousand. So about seventeen percent under our estimate there. Other bidders included Eastern Iowa, Pierce-Tilden, Dave Schmidt, Twix Construction.
Chip Bry.
And Chip Bry.
And Boomerang.
And Boomerang. So very competitive. That's a good number of bidders for a project like that, actually. And you have worked, says worked with that three.
Okay. Any questions on the bids?
Just to confirm the council have or awarding bid, they have to act on any special assessment.
I don't believe so. You know, maybe the assessment aspect of that is just the financing portion of it. So the council can decide how they want to finance it. We've already got the funding lined up. The question is whether or not it's going back home to the property tax payers or Jason.
Don't they, I thought, I could be wrong, I'm not the funding council, but I thought they had to act on their resolution assessment for award.
So this is where I wanted to make a motion to table the awarding of the bid to whoever we go with, which obviously looks like top grade to be the recommendation. I wanted to table it until we have a resolution on the assessment with us having to have a super majority to make an adjustment to the assessment. And I don't think the council at this point in time has that. I think before we go and award a contract to anybody, we should have that agreement amongst the council on how we're gonna assess these properties.
One, he stood good.
Yeah. He might lose out on the bid.
They should be thirty days.
Thirty days.
I think it's thirty-three.
Either thirty or forty-five.
That's all bed moms go for, too. They don't give you thirty minutes. So with consideration of the bids, all we're doing is reviewing those. We've got those, it would be the Resolution thirteen that we can table till the next council meeting for reward it.
So we want to table Resolution thirteen, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, a motion.
Motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Joe?
Uh, this is where I say.
This is where you vote, yeah?
Yeah, yes, the motion is very about table.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian? You can vote on this probably to table it.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Bill?
No.
Mary Ann?
No.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a public hearing. It's five thirteen. It will be a public hearing of proposed plan specification, form of contract, and estimate on the cost of the Grand Avenue Extension Project. And we, let's see, Jason, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. So the Grand Avenue Extension Project is consideration extending Grand Avenue approximately thirteen hundred feet or tall hundred feet north from this existing termination at what they call the bus barn north to an extension of Fairview Drive east, which is about three hundred feet. Project would include a water main extension loop up on the west side of Grand Avenue, the eight-inch water main on Grand Avenue, extending and tying it through a six-inch water main from Fairview Drive to the east. Also includes a short sanitary sewer extension east on Fairview Drive to a manhole north of the paving that we're gonna be installing now to facilitate future expansion of city services should additional subdivisions go north from there. Project also includes construction of an open waterway on the east side of Grand Avenue that'll direct some of the northerly runoff that comes through there and try and essentially Grand Avenue Extension is to be elevated above what the existing grade is there to try and put a little bit of a dike or a berm in there to act as a berm to try and minimize water that would go towards the fairgrounds and try and direct it, keep it east going into the existing detention basin that's east of the bus barn to try and minimize impacts of water drainfall events and flash events that may come through the area. It's grading of the right-of-way basically to set up a future ten-foot-wide trail that the city currently has a grant for. So this would just basically set up mass grading to minimize work that would happen at future time for that trail were to happen. I believe it's tentatively scheduled for twenty twenty-five based upon the grant that was awarded through the Transportation Alternatives Program through the RPA. Also providing intakes drainage with along the street to the east, and they're providing three intakes back onto the fair property to facilitate them an outlet location should they want to be doing additional work on their property. You know, to help alleviate some of their drainage they have there will provide them locations that they can outlet into and drain it off their property. Some new questions?
Yeah, questions. You said the trail is gonna be ten-foot wide.
Correct, because there's a grant, because it's a federal grant, they're all required to be ten-foot wide for federal grants per the federal guidelines. It's actually a fourteen-foot total corridor between the two-foot shoulder on either side of that, but the only, the paved section of that is ten feet wide.
Thank you.
It'll be put on the west side of Grand Avenue and go all the way from Acre Street north to the Fairview Drive Extension.
Fairview Water, Water Main dead ends back there, doesn't it?
Currently, it dead ends both, actually both water mains dead end. So currently, the water main going north on Grand Avenue is a dead end at the fire hydrant that's just west of the bus barn. And then just, there's a fire hydrant at the east end of Grand Avenue, just east of the last residence. So this would provide a looping for, you know, keep continuing kind of keep continuity of system pressures, provide the ability if there was to be a break on one side or the other, to be able to backfeed that subdivision in that area.
Any questions for Jason? Any public input?
Kurt Minor, seven oh two East Howard Street. What is the purpose of this? What's the goal?
Well, I believe it's been in our comprehensive plan for
Ideally, the extension is to put Grand Avenue all the way to Honey Creek Road at some point. So we have a parallel road to Highway thirteen that we can use as a bypass or a detour route when the thirteen is down. There's not a comparable road on the east side of Highway thirteen. Which would be north, frankly.
Would also help with flood. Flood, I didn't work open.
Or this will give us a little bit more on flood control.
Certainly is.
But the main purpose is actually extending Highway, extending Grand Avenue all the way to Honey Creek at some point in future. That's one step at a time.
I know some of the people up on the north end were happy to hear that there was gonna be a sidewalk put in just because of trying to walk, instead of walking through the fairgrounds. They can walk down the trail, which will put them out right by the school, so.
Take some traffic off the, takes our little kids off that street there. And wasn't the fire department also kind of
The fire board was one that were also big into fire protection up on the north end. God forbid something ever happens up there, they're blocked in, never get to them.
Okay, any other public comment? With nothing else being heard at five eighteen, I'm going to close the public hearing, and before us, we have Resolution fourteen. The council wishes proceed, adoption will approve the confirmed, the plan, specification, form of contract, the estimate of cost for the Grand Avenue Extension Project. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Second.
Any further questions? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Linda?
No.
Brian?
No.
Okay. Do we even go to the consideration of bids then? Nope, just skip it. Okay, fine. Uh, next, we have Resolution fifteen of the council wishes pursue. Well, we don't even have to do that. Okay, next, we'll go to our regular agenda items. Airport capital improvement project. There was a discussion, I guess, and you three put this out here, so we'd like to hear what your discussion's about.
I'll start. So prior to be running for city council, talking to many different citizens of Manchester, not seeing the reasoning behind any expansion of the airport whatsoever, obviously, is what brought me to run for city council. And I've been very open from day one before I was even voted in here that the expansion was not supported by me. So that's part of the reason why it was had been brought up to get it on the agenda, to get this airport expansion project eliminated from future agendas, wasting future funds from the city's money and to allow the three families that are having to pay lawyers to fight for land that they've already bought for. So that was my reasoning behind it. I don't support eminent domain at all for any reason, so.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with you, I'm in domain. I do not believe it's thing to do, and that's one thing, and we make absolutely no money on this airport, and you keep sticking money into it all the time, and just a few people who use the airport so I, the people in town here really want it. That's my opinion.
Well, like Joe, I ran after the meeting to go ahead with the airport expansion. I ran. And basically, I'm pretty sure that's why I got elected. I'm sitting in the seat now to be the voice of the people that elected me, and you know, as I said in that meeting, I just don't see a benefit for the vast majority of the people, and the word that I get is on the street is nobody's in favor of this that I know of, except for the people that own airplanes. And with that, that's why I'm gonna vote this, vote the way I'm gonna vote. I just don't think it's necessary at this point. We have other infrastructure that needs to be addressed prior to this, and that's the focus I'm gonna have moving forward.
Do you have any comments?
So do you want the airport closed? Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, we would.
So we would have to pay back the feds seven fifty plus everybody that owns a hanger out there?
Well, I think that's
Ballpark.
Couple concerns or questions, we'd have to work our way through that, and Jim and I'd have to sit down and talk about the process to figure out how to close the airport. That's what we're wanting to do here. Concern here is, you know, we have obligations, with better obligations, we make sure we represent to those. We had somebody that just invested quite a bit of money on a hanger out there. We've got a couple people that put hangars up there recently. So yeah, if that's the direction of the council, Jim and I need to work towards that opportunity, I guess. Because we do, will have operations and maintenance out there. I mean, we're still gonna have mowing out there, we're still gonna have electric bill, we have a runway that we're gonna have to maintain somehow unless we close the airport, and if that's the direction we're going, then I need to have an exit strategy or game plan of how we're gonna do that. And Jim and I have not had a chance to sit down and try to work with FAA to see how that happens.
So how do we pay for it if we have to shut this down? I mean, that's the other thing. How much money is that gonna cost us to do that?
Well, how much is it gonna be to buy air?
We really don't know.
I mean.
If
If we can't
If we choose to shut down the airport completely, there's a lot of things we need to figure out, like timing and how you do it so that we notify people not to try to land a plane on a closed airport. I mean, I, there's a lot of little things we would need to go through. I'm not saying you can't do it. You're the council, you vote, we'll figure out a way to do what you want to do. But I think we would need some time. I don't know what the the rights of the hangar owners are for this. I really don't know. I haven't given that any enough thought to give you a good answer. I could only guess if it'd be hear me think out loud is all you hear. But I, if those are things you want information on, those are things we can provide.
I don't know that I'm saying close the airport completely. I don't know that that's the push here. We talked about the rights of the, of the hanger owners if we were to go that route. I questioned, as the previous administration was in here, about the rights of the property owners when we decided we were gonna start going aggressively to get the land to make an expansion of an airport that we can't justify expanding. So at this point in time, the whole project of expanding the airport ten-foot wider runway with three hundred and fifty-foot longer run runway, the community doesn't want it. The community came here and they voiced their opinions very loudly, not only inside this building, but outside of this building, that they did not want that airport expanded. And the previous city council didn't listen, and that's why two new city council members are sitting up here. So this move that we made or decided to make at the end of the last week was to stop the expansion project.
Last week?
That, when we had sent the emails to have it put on the agenda for tonight.
I didn't receive an email.
I didn't either.
Well, I, I don't get them. I was
And I didn't get an email either.
So that's fine. I we were CC'd an email.
On the second one, I had to come in and ask, or to, I was asked by Tim to come in and talk about the agenda. And that's the only time that I saw it. I was not copying in on the very first one.
So. I had to party for the emails. So what, I just, I don't get my walking orders.
We requested to have the airport experience, all airport expansion projects put on the agenda for tonight.
That was three of you.
Correct.
I had a question. Do we really qualify for this federal money we have? We specifically have so many planes.
Dean and Jim, would you, they're gonna be able to answer. They got, they were at the beginning of this, and Donna's jumped in, too, so.
I, for one, would like to see you really analyze what it's gonna cost you if you don't do the expansion. Don't blindly say the hell with it, and then down the road have three or four million dollars worth of expense that you get absolutely nothing for. You need to really look into what it's gonna cost and how many years it's gonna take. The federal government didn't win to this lightly, and they analyzed the needs in the federal airport system. Jim, you probably have more knowledge of that than I do. You've been involved with them as a pilot. They want to have an airport every half an hour. The way I understand it, for emergencies. That's part of why they want to do this. It's part of the national system. It's not just for the benefit of a handful of pilots.
Right.
The, the goal that the council had when we decided to proceed with our it's gone back how many years, Tim? We've been working on this for what, a decade or more?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe fifteen years or twenty? We've been looking at planning and we developed a plan. And how much money have we paid for the engineers to design this? I mean, there's millions of dollars invested in designing this so that it could become part of a national system. The federal government wouldn't have approved it if they hadn't said we qualified. We're at a low point right now. I think the planes were, you could, you could look at how many planes are there and do we really qualify? Like, yet the federal government hasn't said, no, you don't qualify, have they?
No, to answer your question, Linda, whether there's ten planes or nine or twelve, that's not the relevant point. The feds have already made a commitment to us to, to do what we think is right for the community to create this, however, however big of an airport that we as a community think we should have. If you guys are thinking, let's just hold on to the expansion project, that's, that's, you know, that's, there's that's, that can be decided, and that can be worked with. To shut down the airport, that is reckless and terribly irresponsible. I don't think you understand what would be at stake, and I gotta be careful on public record, but we don't know. I'm gonna rely on Tim and Jim here, but there needs to be a study. I'm gonna rely on Tim and Jim here, but there needs to be a study, there needs to be an exhaustive lengthy, multiple sit-down meetings before you decide to shut that thing down. That is a much, much bigger decision. Stopping the expansion, that I think, you know, if that's, if that's what the council wants to do at this point, of course, you're, you're in charge, you know, I get that. And I understand why you're here and why the community wants you to get in there and start, you know, cutting the budget, saving some money. I get that, and we can work with that, and there's no problem with whatever the plans are, there's been a lot of work put into it, a lot of engineering, a lot of time. And, and you know, a lot of this stuff is pie in the sky. What I'm thinking is what you saw on some of the information that Tim put out regarding the five and even the ten-year capital improvement projects. When I looked at that and saw the local, the city input, I kind of backed up and said, wait a minute, that's a lot of money for the city. Those were just wish list things. Those would only take place if the Iowa DOT had a, had a grant project or the FAA had a ninety-ten split. If you can see the real numbers and not just some sheet of paper and make a knee-jerk reaction of let's just shut it all down, that would be, I think, a very bad decision, and there may be, no. I gotta be careful.
We have great flexibility, we as a city, you as a council have great flexibility in when you implement stages of that airport layout plan. Nobody's forcing you to do it now. You, you, the federal government is very cooperative with working with, working with cities that have the money, they don't have the money, they're patient. They really wanna work with everybody, it's not like they're saying you gotta do that this year. The other thing I think is even bigger than the airport expansion, if you don't in some ways you're rebranding the city. And we've worked for years to become a city that was progressive, that was working with grant programs and with the Iowa Department of Economic Development and how many agencies, Donna, that that work at trying to get people to come to work, live and play in our, in our community. If we start saying we're not gonna build street projects, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna close the airport, you're starting to put a sign out there that rebrands this community as closed for business. And you won't get grants. And you won't get invited to be a pilot project for new innovations in our society. We just had a phone call last week that we're being asked to be a pilot, our colleagues have asked to be a pilot project in a health initiative, and we got a phone video conference this week on that. Those kind of phone calls will stop. And anytime any company is looking at any kind of expansion and they go to Des Moines and ask give us a list of these communities that have these assets, we won't be on that list.
I love to expand on that story, but business owner says, okay, Manchester, great labor pool, let's go check it out. Calls the pilot, hey, can you fly me to Manchester? So look on the map and say, yeah, if the sky is clear, but the clouds come in, we're stuck there or we can't get there. That was the impetus for why we as a committee spent the last fifteen years working on this. How do we get an instrument approach to our little airport? Well, we, FAA says you gotta be this big and this long. Okay, how do we do that? Have we been working with the local landowners? And the late, how it's been handled lately, I have to agree. There may have, may have been some toes stepped on, and I, I'm not sure if I agree with all of the way it was handled. But when the, when the business owner says, we'd like to expand in Manchester, and the pilot, and the people say, we can't fly there. They don't have, we're the only community in the state of Iowa that's this large that does not have an instrument approach, which means the Hy-Vee jet cannot land here. The whoever corporate bigwigs that want to come in and out, they don't want to drive to Dubuque or to Independence or Monticello, they wanna get in, they wanna get at home. And they've got several stops to make, and the pilot says, Manchester is not a growing community. They're not putting effort into their infrastructure. Airports being one of the big ones, it's hard to quantify, but that was the whole reason that we started this process fifteen years ago. And here we are.
When, when we did the Good to Great Project in, I think in two thousand and ten that started, we toured other communities, we made how many trips? Four, five, six trips. And we, we rented a bus and we toured other communities, went to Waverly and Macocata and Decora and other communities that we felt were just a little bit more advanced than we were. Trying to find out what are we missing in our community that can help us become a little more vital, that could give us some hope for growth. Economic development is very difficult because everybody's competing for it. When we did those tours, the things that came to light, the things they had that we didn't have was an airport and post-secondary education. Those were the two big ones. At that point, we didn't have post-secondary education, so we went to work and put a committee together. Jim and I talked with NICC and got them back on board. And that's, and we're looking at a possible expansion of that effort now. But even NICC, if they look at our community and say, hey, they're starting to close up, they'll close that too. I mean, you don't wanna start a downward trend in your community to try to save. Don't throw the future away to pay for the present. I hear a lot of talk about wants and needs. And there's a real fine line between what you need and what you want. Sometimes the things you want will help you pay for the things you need. If you're not growing and not have any hope of growing, then who's gonna pay the taxes when you accelerate the exodus?
Is this a public hearing now?
I, yeah, if you wanna say something, I asked a thing about the money, so, and that's what it turned into, go ahead. No, go ahead, if you'd like.
Like rehashing everything that happened at the public hearing a month ago.
Right, did you have something else you wanted to say though, Kurt?
I, I think, well, I think I was at a funeral, and if I could interject one thing, sorry, Jim, I know you're raising your hand. I would urge you, put this thing on pause, let us work together, let us talk it out, let us all look at the numbers. And if you could give us that opportunity, I think you would at least be doing yourselves the city, the people that put you in office and doing the city a favor. Because there may be some consequences of, of taking actions now, there may be some things that might come back and not look so good down the road, that's my big concern.
Okay, Jim.
There is no action item on the agenda tonight anyway, it's discussion. No, you, you haven't specified, you have to give more direction than if you, you don't have enough specificity to close the airport with a vote tonight. What I would suggest is so that I can make sure I give you the information you want, and Tim can. That you have this on the agenda to talk about this, but let us find out if we just shut down the current acquisition phase that you were talking about, and stay where we're at now. What are the costs and options for the future, so then you decide, then you have all the information to make your vote. I make it clear, I've never been elected to anything, I have no opinion on policy, but I wanna make sure my clients know what their choices are. I think that would make sense. I, I don't think it's that hard to find out. Last fall, we were on the phone with the lady from the FAA, Tim and I were in a conference call where we talked a little bit about if we don't go forward with the acquisition of land. So I don't think it's gonna be that hard to get ahold of her and find out, but let's make sure you have all the, so you know exactly what it is. So when you vote, we've given you all the information. Then if you wanna proceed to anything beyond that, would, I would suggest we do the same steps. If there's something you wanna look at, let's find out the consequences the best we can get to you so you can vote. That, that's my recommendation. On the other hand, I'm not elected, that's my recommendation.
Well, the, the thing, the thing that I keep hearing and what resonates with me is it seems like there's been a lot of work the last fifteen years to get to this point. However, the transparency to the public and to the people that own the properties and, and to the people that live in this community. When I talk to them, they're not in favor of this. And had they been asked fifteen years prior, it would have probably saved a lot of money. Cause I don't think this program would ever got feet and traction to go. I really don't. That's my, that's my issue with it is, I, I just think, you know, that it wasn't transparent to the people of this town. I didn't even know about it, and I'm I talked to a lot of people, and it's just like it was a, this back back floating thing, and, and I'm sure it's been out there, I just didn't, cause I'm busy, everybody's busy. People aren't aware of stuff. That's why I think as a council, we need to do a better job of getting the information out to specify these meetings to the public via KMCH and, and the newspaper, and then prior to meetings and after meetings, and just get the information out to the public. Communication is key, and if it isn't out there, the people are busy and they, they don't have time, they're home cooking meals and they, they just don't have time for it, but yeah, I'm not up with, I'm like you, Joe, I don't know about shutting down the airport, but I definitely still in favor of voting for the expansion, so.
Brian, I'm gonna respond to you here. Tim is on KMCH every day after a council meeting and as a guest of the day. They run those repeatedly throughout the day. If you're listening to KMCH, you'll hear them. And the next day, they are on their website so that you can go back and listen to it at any point. So it's, it's always available for people, all you have to do is click on it and you can listen to ninety percent of it, I don't know if he does whole thing or not, but, but he probably does ninety percent of it. There are things on the radio, news stories that they take out of our meetings. KMCH, I think, is great about giving us support and, and putting the information out there. The thing is, you have to listen to it. If you're not listening, no, you're not gonna hear it. Our, our press has something in the paper almost every week. Tonight, they're not here unfortunately, but I'm sure that they will find things out when I talk to them, just, but they have things in the paper. Again, you have to read it. I think what a lot of people do is they expect us to somehow put it into their brain without them taking the effort to either read or listen. And you can't do that. Somehow or another, you have to become responsible. If you are that involved and you want to know what's going on in town, then you have to take the responsibility to listen or to read. I don't know what else we can do. Quite honestly, it's videotaped now, you know, they can watch that, they can come and sit in the meetings. I honestly don't know what else we can do other than go to every house and say, hey, you know what we did last night? I don't have time to, maybe you. The other thing is that I think you're talking to certain people, I'm talking to certain people. A lot of the people I'm talking to, almost, I would say, almost everybody I'm talking to is telling me they do support the airport. So I do not want to have it come out that nobody in town wants the airport, cause it's not true. People are coming to me and saying, support the airport, we need the airport. We need it so that we can improve the town, so that we've got the chance to do economic development and that type of thing. I'm not hearing from people, the same people that you are obviously, because you're hearing one thing and I'm hearing something else. So I don't think it's fair to say nobody in town wants the airport. Yeah, there's probably people who don't. But I also want to say, there are people that I'm talking to that do want the airport. So we have both situations in town, and I just don't think it's fair to say nobody in town wants it. That's, that's why I'm responding to you, Brian, because I, I think that it's not fair to say that. There, there are people in both camps. So, anyway.
And you're right about the radio and the, and the newspaper, it's always busy, so it's hard to, hard to get in, but I guess the, the way that I look at it, that, that we get to people the information is they elect us to set in this position. And I'm their voice and, and that's what I gotta vote on when I, when it comes to these decisions.
I agree.
So.
And I appreciate that, and, and I think that people talk to you about it, and I think that's great, people talk to me about it too, so. So, you know, we're both gonna have to listen, we're all gonna have to listen and make decisions and so on, and that's that's why we have these meetings, so that we can listen, so, thank you.
Kurt, I'm gonna give you the courtesy, what did you would like to say?
Why weren't all those people here at the public hearing a month ago when there was probably ninety to ninety-five percent of people opposed to it?
How many of those people live in town?
We can't look at it that way. We can't. That is the exact reason right there why we ran for city council. Because there's three families that are fighting to keep their land.
But, but we're not
That they can't vote.
We have never voted though. Joe, you're, you're making an assumption here. This group that I sat on before, before you were here, we never took a vote to go to eminent domain. We took a vote to continue to work with these people to try to come up with a plan that would allow us to do what we felt we needed to do. We have never, never said that we were gonna do eminent domain. We said it's a possibility. But a lot of things are possibilities, but we have never taken the vote to go to eminent domain. Am I correct in that, Jim?
Let me answer that. The resolution, as I recall, it was to continue with the negotiations. It did have to give authority for council to proceed with the process. There would still be steps the council would have to take before we would get to eminent domain at that point. But it did give authority for us to be jumping through the hoops, so at some point later you would have the authority to.
If we chose to.
So you did, but you did vote to authorize us to move forward with that as an option, but it was not voted to proceed yet.
Right, right.
To do the research. There's paperwork and, so we knew all those things, because that was one of the things, there were still things we did not know.
Cause in eminent domain, if you're going to try to negotiate, you have to do it in a certain way.
Right.
And the proper way to do it anyway, by giving appraisals to everybody and going through that process. And you did authorize that, so, but you did not authorize me to proceed with filing a petition.
That's right.
So in order to expand the airport three hundred and fifty feet to the runway, which direction do we have to go, north or south?
There's no choice.
No choice, and then, so that tells us and the only way to get three hundred and fifty feet to the north is south.
Acquiring land, now, again, I wanna, I wanna stipulate that I was approached by Bill Gerhardt five years ago about acquiring land from him for that expansion. That's where this kind of started, was Bill was a willing seller at that time. We weren't able to get together on price, we weren't, because with the FAA, I have to have environmentals done, I have to have historical studies done, have to have things done through the process. It took longer than we anticipated, and Bill was needing to sell the land for whatever personal reason he had, and so he sold it. But when he sold it, he had to disclose that information to the buyer that we were looking at that, so they were not in the dark. You knew, you knew.
Was there a similar disclosure used for that investment of hangars on the airport? To let them know that you're putting money into an airport that may or may not be here for expansion purposes later down the road?
I don't think you'd have it in the writing, but I think anytime you would invest the hanger, you take a risk, the city would discontinue.
So the same, same, similar risk that, that Todd takes in buying that land in the north?
No, I don't think the hangars, they, they may not be entitled to be reimbursed for market value, I don't know about that.
What I'm saying, when you, when you purchase something, land or property, and like you take a risk, correct?
If I buy any land, it's maybe subject eminent domain and they have to pay fair market value, whatever that is. The hangars, I'm not sure have, hanger owners would be in the same position. I, I don't know. I don't believe they would be, but I'd have to look.
And I don't know where, honestly, I, I don't, I can't speak for other council members, but I don't know where the idea of closing the airport came up, because that's not anywhere in any of the discussions. We're not talking about closing it, we're talking about not expanding it, leaving it the way.
It was unclear in the very first email that I was shown after I came in for the agenda. You didn't get it, hey?
I just asked if that was what your plans were, was to close the airport, and Linda said, yeah.
Not with the expand, I guess I should have said that.
Can we, can we table this then? Or? Or?
I suggest, I still go with my suggestion. Let me get you some information before you vote. That's my suggestion.
Can I say one more initially? On a blast Delaware County Economic Development. Again, as we look as our role is Delaware County Economic Development, we are here to do what we can to promote all communities in Delaware County. Manchester being the county seat, having the airport. When we work with Iowa Air, Iowa Economic Development Authority and the Iowa Area Development Group, they have a list of items before we can respond to our piece. If we close our airport, as Dean mentioned, we are now putting, we are closed for business. Again, as we look to the future, we are planting the seeds that we are open for business. We don't know what our current industries may do in the future. Again, we are planting the seed. When Todd and I were first married, we knew that we wanted to grow our hog business, so we had to expand our buildings. It's the same scenario. We are planting the seeds for the future. So please, please do not close our airport. When we were looking for an ethanol project in Delaware County, they landed in Manchester. They landed in Manchester with their vehicles and their airplanes and things because they could get in and out of Manchester in a timely fashion to be able to go through Delaware County for the sites we had chosen for them to review. So again, please.
And then they put over at Diversity. Because people fought.
I represent Delaware County Economic Development. And that ethanol plant is on Delaware County with son in Manchester.
It's insane.
But they landed here because they could not. And I was working with them.
I just feel we keep throwing money at the airport. Keep throwing money. We don't ever make any money off of it. People, don't we kind of have to pay for it in town here at all?
We don't make money at the swimming pool. Maybe we should close the swim.
Yeah, there won't be anything for anybody. Manchester knows nothing to do. Well, that's a good thing for the kids to do during the summer. There's nothing to do in Manchester. Water park going up from the pond or you can't, going on water park and getting out frozen, but we just don't have much. For people doing it in town. Because that trimple, what are these parents gonna do? Who bought all the kids to the?
We're not talking about that.
Like, guys.
Maryville's done really well with expanding their business district and they don't have a public airport.
They also have an ethanol plant that gives them the tax base. What is it? A hundred and forty? Or is it something like that?
Something similar to that.
Yeah.
They also wrote us a letter.
Mm-hmm. They support us doing this. Yes, they were very.
Did ours will come up with any cash for us to help support our airport?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Do you like to use it? No.
Why would they not want us to have one? It costs them nothing. I mean, I am, I just discredited the idea that of course they want one. We want that if they were doing the expansion. I mean, that's just.
Just like the neighbor building a swimming pool and nothing you swim in it. They pay the property taxes and all that other stuff.
I mean, I can see why they'd want us to have one. I understand that. They have a lot of industry over there. I get that. I mean, I understand.
Well, okay. Yep. So I'm gonna get this back to the council. What are we doing?
I'll make a motion to follow Jim Peters's recommendation to basically table it for this time, Jim. Until you get information back to us.
And maybe even have a more specific, I was looking at this agenda and I don't know if Board docs actually showed. If your action is going to be, if you want to have considered action to stop expansion for now, make that the point on the agenda. Is that what's on Board docs? Eric is just telling us.
So on Board docs, it is showing the stopping of the expansion project.
Okay, I, I was reading, I was going off the paper one here.
There, there was an adjustment to, to it, uh, to, I messaged him to make sure that, that was clarified.
Okay.
That, uh, well, we were voting on a stopping the airport expansion, not closing the airport or any of that other stuff. Just the airport expansion project that we're talking about ten feet wider, three hundred and fifty feet longer and, and land accusations or accusations that are a part of that is what, uh, was the push.
In reality, I, if you do decide to have us get more information, Tim and I aren't going to spend any additional time trying to acquire land in the meantime. We, you, we will be putting things on pause till we get you the information. Uh, cause it would, it would be silly, knowing that this is a question.
But it wouldn't be silly by any means that these three families continue to pay their lawyers to make sure they can keep their land. And that's the big problem.
There's no procedures going on with anybody, right? There's no active action being taken right now. We can get you the information so you can decide.
We can make an informed decision.
Before you make the decision to stop the expansion. As, I'm not telling you, uh, yes or no. I understand. I think that would be good to have it all aired out. So basically.
I'd like to vote on it tonight. I think that the people have spoken on what, where they stand on, on this. And it's not just the few that I might talk to or the few that other council members might talk to. It was the entire city by the decisions they made on who they elected based off of our stances.
Okay. Can I make one comment? And I just, and it's a philosophical comment that I just, I'm really sad to see that Washington DC now has
Discussion.
Come here that we can't talk and have a conversation about this stuff like we did the other night. And then it was then brought up later without sharing it with the whole group that you were gonna bring this and put it on the agenda. And that's fine, I guess. And just find that if we're gonna work together to do things underhanded creates distrust. Now, the other thing that I want to remind us all, and it's a philosophical thing that I'm gonna get back to, is that when we are elected, there isn't anybody here who is elected by a super majority, not a one of us. And every one of us ran, all of us, and we're all finishing our terms to come here and represent the greater city of Manchester and part of the county as well, because we are all a county entity as well. And we all said that we would do that in a fiscally responsible way. And I don't just represent the people that voted for me. I also sometimes have to make the people who voted for me upset because I have to also think about the people who did not vote for me. I am looking about the greater good of the whole community. I'm just sharing that philosophical thing with you all because none of us can say that any of the, yeah, the people have spoken, but it wasn't a super majority. And we don't know because we taught, we all walk in different groups and that's great because that's what makes us come together. And that's why it's good that we sit and I hope that we can have conversations that find little ground. Because compromise is the only way we continue to move forward.
Good, good.
I really should, probably shouldn't. Yeah, we're done. Council, you need to decide what we're doing.
We had a motion for sure bring to table until further information.
Do I have a second on that?
One second.
Can we get a date for the table?
Well, how long is it gonna take to get information, do you think, too?
For me to get it out to everybody, it wouldn't be the next meeting, but the one after that, realistically.
February twenty-sixth. February, no, it'd be February.
So it kinda do to our budget.
Cause I don't know how fast I'm gonna get people.
February twelfth, February twelfth.
February twelfth will be our next city council meeting. We have budget work session on the twenty-ninth and then the budget work session.
On the fourth.
On the fourth or fifth, yeah, fifth. Um, which also will be as soon as we can get something back to you.
Just out of curiosity, because I like to ask a lot of questions, so that way I can learn a lot more. But you have multiple council members on both sides of the fence here. And we got the information or partial information that was given to the city, uh, about one side about what it's like to expand. But we never really have the information on what if we killed this expansion project. Why was that information not ever, why did we not do our homework on that side?
See, you can't say everything.
Every time that we do anything for the city, it's a yes or a no. And to not have information on both sides is foolish, in my opinion. Just wanna throw that out there.
That's fine.
We're tabling something. We're putting it out a month. It's a whole reason why we're tabling East Main Street project because we can't come to agreements on that because we're not doing homework on both sides of the table. So yes, we do have to work together for the next, at least two years until another election comes up. And my personal opinion is, is I feel that some, not at all, are willing to do the work. We had a session last Monday to talk about the assessment. We have some that I asked a lot of questions. I threw out a lot of different ideas. I threw out ideas about having the entire bike way paid for, the entire curb and gutter paid for. I'm not ashamed of doing any of that. And then we have some people that just wanna stand in there and, and the old ways.
I believe a compromise is also offered. A compromise is also offered, so don't make sure.
Paying for an extra foot.
And then there was, there was other things. There were other things, Joe, and you know it.
Well, it's all in the minutes. Anybody can go and look at it.
There was a compromise set, thrown out there and we couldn't come to an agreement on it. Well, we thought it was. Yep. Let's stick to the airport. All right. I have a motion, Bill.
Yes, the table for the time being.
Mary Ann, Joe.
No.
Linda.
No.
Brian.
No.
Okay. Then get your motion on the table then. Somebody can make another motion.
My motion, the agenda was pushed for for tonight, to vote for the stopping of the expansion project for the airport.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Okay. Joe.
So this is to stop the airport?
No.
No.
The expansion. Yes, they're stopping the expansion of the airport.
Motion back, everybody here. So you gotta, cause it's gonna be in the minutes. Have her read it back, so everybody hears what's gonna be in the minutes.
From, Joe, from what you said, this is what I understand. Uh, you made the motion to stop the expansion projects at the airport.
Correct.
And it was seconded by Brian.
Correct. Okay, Joe.
So this, that's the, I just wanna make sure it's all right because there's, I'm saying no to the expansion, so saying yes to no of the expansion.
Yeah, your motion is to stop the expansion of the projects at the airport by voting.
Okay, so now, yes, just stop. Okay, yes. I just.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Double negatives are hard.
Right.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yep.
Mary Ann?
No.
Bill?
No.
Okay, we'll move forward next. Uh, we have the, um, garbage rate increase.
So, we're in the new year. Looks like our contract says for an increase. Um, we need to update our water, our garbage rate, offset our cost from those increases as well. Staff was proposing a dollar per month increase on our garbage rate. I know Joe had mentioned something about doing some sort of, uh, citywide cleanup. And we're going to do that, well, look at the cost there so that there may be something, maybe the dollar per hour, the dollar per month for residents increases it enough. We're gonna look at the cost is on that and how we're gonna find it, so. So, um, honestly, we, we may wanna postpone that another, till we get to our budget work sessions. As we talked about, uh, potential citywide cleanup. When we just take it back. Uh, we would typically do it July one, wouldn't we?
July, yeah. That's traditional when we do. And this would require an ordinance. We just wanted to bring it to your attention to see if you wanted to proceed. But like Tim said, we do have to have a budget time, some bigger conversations about the cleanup day.
So from my understanding of, uh, it's a pleaser sanitation, solid waste, the long one that's on our computer here. Would you go down to page four? It's a three or four. It has it broke down by years that this was already, when we bid it, this was already discussed that this was going to happen.
Yeah, so it's just how much we charge.
It's the contract.
If it moves up, we move up.
Yeah, and that helps cover, you know, we, we bill monthly, um, so it helps cover a portion of the postage, the paper, the admin time to bill, um, switching when people move in and out, switching accounts with pleasers, um, and then paying pleaser. So that's why we charge a little bit more than what, uh, charges us because we do have those administrative costs on top.
Can I ask one question on this?
Yes.
Years ago, the city did this citywide cleanup. It was unbelievable, the amount of stuff people hauled out of their backyards and their basements. What was expected to take two or three days, took over a week. So I'm just commenting, you should, uh, ask some of the old timers at the street department about it, how it went. They had dump truck loads. So it's an expensive, time-consuming proposition.
Okay, well, maybe we should only accept, shouldn't accept everything. We have some kind of rules on that.
We can do that another day. We'll do that during our session. We'll talk about that. Okay, so, um, I need, is there anything else we need to do? Do you need a motion on this?
I think let's, let's hold that until we have our budget work sessions to talk it out.
Mm-hmm.
So would you need them?
We don't need a motion.
Just a discussion item.
Okay.
Okay. Next, I have a motion to adopt resolution sixteen. It's, uh, approving voluntary early retirement program. Yeah, happy for, it's sad to see our chief is, you know, gonna be retiring. I need a motion to adopt this early retirement.
I'll make the motion to adopt the retirement.
I'll submit it.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
He's so young, but yes.
Mary Ann?
Um, yes, but.
With sense.
With, yeah.
We really don't wanna let you go, but congrats.
All right, next, um, I need, uh, this is a discussion thing. The Clean Energy District, they sent us some information regarding us joining their, um, what would you call it? Coalition, thank you. Um, I don't know if y'all got to read it in its entirety.
Yeah, um, obviously, the line energy provides with electrical service here in the city of Manchester. Well, it's a lot of areas, Northeast Iowa. This coalition has been formed in order to contest line energy's proposed rate increases, which would be thirteen percent or so for residential and twenty percent from this government and small businesses. Um, if we are wanting to join, you know, we can do a memorandum agreement for joining on, signing on, saying we're opposed to their rate increase. Uh, they are asking for financial contribution if we want to do so, uh, to help them offset their cost for their train fees. Uh, what I will say is, uh, what I've seen in the past, when they do, these coalitions do it, they don't necessarily stop. The rate increase, they may get it reduced.
Well, what's cost?
What's the cost for?
Well, what they're proposing is five percent of our annual electric bill, which would come up about eighty-five hundred dollars. That's the express. Now, we can do whatever the council wants to provide. If you wanna do something different than that, you can do that.
Right.
Or they don't have to join either.
Yeah.
And we don't have to, we don't have to join.
Right. And then, or it might be out, money out the window if they can't get it stopped, yeah, right.
But this is, this is us banding together with other cities.
Other cities.
To try and
Influence the Iowa utilities board and reduce.
To save our citizens some money in their, their life.
I think it's important that we join. I think that there's you, you have to get big numbers for the boards to listen to you. And, and I think that if, if cities aren't willing to back it, it'll just go that way. So I will have huge increase. I feel like it's the right thing to do for the citizens. So I really feel like we need to support it.
Is there a thought on, on contribution?
It's eight thousand five hundred, you said.
Um, the, doing the rough numbers off my back of my hand, uh, based on what our utility bill was this month, multiplied it by twelve, came up with the, the dollar amount and multiplied by five percent. So what I would sit there and say, I'd put a dollar. We can put a direct dollar amount and not to exceed.
So could we do not to exceed ten thousand and then you'd be on that five percent just to give you some wiggle room?
I, I honestly think eighty-five hundred.
Would be funny.
Would be plenty, and it, to me, that's, if they haven't enough done it, they'll return it back, it was based on that, but, you know. No attorneys, no, no offense, Jim, but they, some of them do make sure they get after that, so. Jim's really good about not charging us that much, but, uh, in these rate cases, they put a lot of stuff together.
Okay, so, a motion to join, we make a motion to join with the understanding that we would make a contribution of three thousand. Not to exceed, eight thousand five hundred.
And I would second that.
Any further discussion? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Next, Victoria, we talked about this sewer truck replacement the other day. At our work session, when we were flying through budgets, and do you wanna speak to this, Tim, more?
Yeah, basically, you know, times have changed. We can't just go out and order a truck off the state bidding more. Call down to, or get the state bid, see who's bid and get a truck. Uh, they're not doing fleet vehicles nearly as often as they were in the past, we're not getting the discounts. So it's hard to find vehicles, and right now, uh, we, we, we missed up on a Ford. Maverick that we were looking at because of the timing, from when the dealership called, said, hey, they have this in, this is what specs they have on it. So the time we could get it put together, come to the council, say, can we purchase this vehicle? Uh, it's all to that timeframe. Uh, I guess what I'd like to see is authorization, so we can at least maybe put a deposit on our vehicles, so we can hold it. And then come to the council. Uh, but, uh, the budget, when I talked to you last time, I said, we had thirty thousand dollars budget, go back to spreadsheet, uh, it wasn't updated. It was thirty-five thousand dollars we had budgeted not to exceed. Typically, we buy new vehicles, because we get them cheaper. The one we had a used vehicle for, because of discounts, I'm not gonna make that guarantee anymore, because they're not giving out the discounts to the government units. But when you start looking at used vehicles, trying to compare apples to apples, it's very different.
Right, yeah. When we do this here, uh, I have looked through future replacement vehicles. When we do, do those, can we continue on this type of?
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Cause it makes sense.
Right, right, like, we're, we, we agree we're gonna replace it. Let's not tie your hands to replace it.
Yeah. I think part of the challenge just depends upon the piece of equipment, because some things take eighteen months for us to deliver.
Two years.
Yeah, so that's not so hard, because you know you're gonna be out, but when you're trying to get something replaced, a timely manner, the window, order a fleet vehicles in two days.
So, so is this where I would make the motion to grant you permission to purchase a vehicle to replace the wastewater department? Not to exceed thirty-five thousand?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay, Jason, did you have any other reports tonight? Okay, Ryan?
Nothing else, Brian.
Okay. Uh, Jim?
I have nothing tonight.
Tim?
I've got a couple members signed up for Wednesday night's, uh, finance meeting.
You got me, Jim.
At, at, at the fire station, so if, if I didn't get you signed up, just show up anyway, we'll get you registered, so. And that starts, uh, five thirty is kind of, they're opening up, I think dinner is.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah. And then, uh, Teresa Rochefer is the teacher on that. Uh, she was the finance director for the city of Johnston for a number of years, previous city administrator, city manager, other communities. Very smart person, knows what she's doing.
And that's at the Manchester Fire Department?
At the fire station, yes.
I got the confirmation emails tomorrow, or today.
Aaron? Nothing. Bill?
Uh, nothing, just that, kinda sad, we didn't see the Grand Avenue extension go in. I think that would have benefited a lot of people. So, I will let the people know in North End, they just have to walk down dirt or walk all the way around.
Joe?
I just wanted to, uh, give a pat on the back, or however you would say it, to the, the city staff with the snow removal.
Great, yeah.
I think they did an amazing job with as much snow as we got dumped on in such a short period of time and long hours that they're running, thanks to them.
Amen. Mary Ann?
Nothing.
Linda?
Nothing.
Brian?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything else to add either, except kudos, I'll say, piggyback on what Jim, or Joe said, I also agree with that. And it is six fourteen, I have a motion from Brian, and a second from Linda to adjourn, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.